I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in a moment of silence if you wish. Thank you. Please sign off your phones, pagers, and so forth. Mr. Butler, do you have an update for us, please?
Yes, as of today through actions last week, our tax asking is now down to $7.30 countywide, $9.54 unincorporated, and includes county and rural basic. That leaves us flat at 7:30, and at 9:54, that is a reduction of 82 cents. That's where we're at now.
Any questions for those?
There were a couple of other actions that were taken, too, where our tax rate actually went below the 7:30. We're at 7...we will be at 7:28, and that's possibly today after we do three different things here. So I guess if there's no questions, we proceed right into the other items.
Dennis, if I may, where does that put us over the last 10 to 15 years you had mentioned as far as the levy level?
Okay, the levy level for the last 15 years, this will be the lowest city tax rate for Woodbury County only, not the other agencies, but for Woodbury County it'll be the lowest in 15 years. For our rural levy, it'll be the lowest in 14 years. So there've been significant gains over the last several years, and, you know, hopefully continues as we keep growing. Potential for growth in Woodbury County looks pretty good.
Thank you.
Lowest levy level sounds pretty good.
Yes, for 15 years, that's a long time. I'll never be here for the next 15, I guarantee you.
Well, I'm hopeful of that.
Okay, you want to move to the next item if there's no more questions?
We're good.
Okay, the next item involves the courthouse security. This is not related to the other security issue later on in the board meeting. This issue here occurs with the $60,153 being asked for courthouse security cameras. These cameras are outside the courthouse. They've been recommended to purchase for this building, LEC, Antrosper Hoyt, and maybe the sheriff's office could help me a little bit with this on...you don't want to say what the locations are, but this is what it's for. We're paying for it out of the courthouse security part of the budget, which is taxable. I'd recommend we take that, put in our CIP, which we spend next year, but we don't actually borrow for it until May, which is payable the following year. So recommendation is to move from general sub to CIP, which will result in a $60,153 tax reduction. You want to say anything about the cameras?
Tom Wick, Sheriff's Office, the bid that we were given was for the additional cameras on the outsides of the three buildings.
And does that mean you're actually approving the cameras today? It means you're putting in your CIP, which that can change weekly. So it's just moving so it doesn't be taxed for, we move it to CIP. I guess I'd take a motion to do that.
Well, I would move that, and I would also call it additional security equipment rather than specifically cameras, just in case.
That's fine.
Second.
Motion by Radick, second by Taylor. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Period five to zero.
Okay, the next item I have on the agenda here is item 3B, county service mental health. Because we do not know for sure where we're going with the region, that won't be known probably until March 5th, and that may even be a later date than that, I request that we raise our levy by 200 and...that's currently in place now from 2850 up to 3049, which is the max we can ask for. The reason I'm doing this or requesting this is to get to the max. We can always drop it back, but we can't increase it after we publish it. So it's kind of our protection, whatever region we happen to go to. So request is increase that by the $204,353. Like I again say, we can reduce that to public hearing. We'll have more information by then.
I would move to do so for discussion.
We have a 435.
Oh, I will come back.
Thank you. We have a hard set time of public hearing and sale of property parcel number ending in 001, also known as 317 South Mulberry Street. I will open the hearing for public input.
Hearing none, Mr. Chair, move that the public hearing be closed?
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Ung to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Period five to zero. Public bidding is now open on property ending in 001, also known as 317 South Mulberry. Do you have anyone interested in buying the property? Please come up to the podium and give your name and address, please.
Uh, William Clark.
And what's your address, sir?
Um, 415 South Mulberry.
Would you like to make an opening bid on this?
Yes, whatever the minimum bid was, I was...which is 169, I guess.
169. Is there any other folks, neighbors or otherwise, that wish to make a bid on this property? Going once? Going twice?
I'll move that we sell to William Clark for 169.
Second.
Motion by Radick, second by Ung to sell the property at 317 South Mulberry Street to Mr. Clark for 169 dollars. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Period five to zero. And we're right there. Public hearing and sale for property parcel number ending in 022, also known as 1615 Pear Street. I will open the public hearing for those in favor and opposed to the property sale.
Hearing none, Mr. Chair, move that the public hearing be closed?
I will second that. Motion by Mr. Taylor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. We're now open for public bidding on property at 1615 Pear Street. Do we have anybody interested in property?
I don't see him.
Don't everybody come up at once? I was hoping to get into a bidding war later here a couple of weeks ago. Shall we table this?
I'll move to delete it from the agenda today.
Yeah, I'll reschedule with him. He probably forgot, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Move to remove it from the act of the agenda and reschedule? Motion by Radick to move, I'm waiting for...all second that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Period five to zero. Dennis would love to continue on mental health issues, please.
Sure, so that is the reason that I am requesting is go to the maximum. Like I say, at the public hearing, we always reduce it, we'll have a better idea of what is happening by then, hopefully, because that's March 13th, that's four weeks, three weeks from now.
I'll second Jeremy's motion from five minutes ago.
Thank you.
Any other questions, sir?
I just want to make a couple of brief points as relates to rolling hills and one of the reasons that we're doing this. We do not know yet what the March 5th decision, if any, will be as far as a contingency potentially to Woodbury County. It may be to come in to the region with not only the 25% reserve level that we all know that we need for three months of operating expenses, as well as the levy and per capita expenses to cover our own budget, but also maybe up to a million dollars extra. And the reason being is that Rolling Hills has a built-up over a period of years reserve level that they are interested in having Woodbury County equally have as well. And so I think it's important for taxpayers to understand that that may mean a bit of a higher per capita or our max levy this year, which can in turn then be used in future years to buy down the levy. So that's one of the ideas that is being floated out there and may have action. So I think it's a very good thing to be at the 3049 today, that can always be reduced in the future. If there's any questions on that, or if that all made sense?
The earliest we would know if that's an option is probably the meeting after the March meeting. Does that sound right? Since they'd have to vote, the counties would have to vote, and then they'd have to vote again?
Right, to know if it was a done...a done deal, essentially.
Chair, any questions? Sure.
Jim Rixner, 114 Midville Avenue. Just want to understand what Mr. Taylor is suggesting or commenting on. If we have...if we stay, if Woodbury County stays in the Sioux Rivers region, I presume there's no levy increase. If they go into the Rolling Hills region, there will be a levy increase.
Yes and no. Potentially in the future year, for example FY '20, Sioux Rivers will have expended all of its reserve balance and will have none to rely on except to be at the max levy, whereas Rolling Hills will have a built-up reserve that can buy down the levy. So there's kind of a teeter totter effect. This year, that would be true, next year it would not, the reverse would be the case.
Fine, I just want to remind the board at some point I had said that if you leave the Sioux Rivers region, you're going to increase the levy and probably reduce services. You just said there will be an increase in the levy. I understand precisely what you're talking about in terms of next year, but that projection in terms of next year is unfair without information from the Sioux Rivers region as to how they project into next year. In addition to that, as you well know, the legislature is dealing with this drawdown on the reserve that's actually a live bill right now that gives some flexibility to the regions not to have to pay out all the reserves. You understand that?
Absolutely. But I also want to...may I respond?
Sure, of course you can.
Okay, thank you.
I'm interested in your response.
Absolutely.
That's the question.
Well, the point being, if today the levy is...you have the reduction from Sioux Rivers region, and then you know even by their own projections that they're going to be at the max, correct? That would be taking into account...okay, so you grant that, that they'll be at their max levy, and then you look at Rolling Hills and their projection a year forward, and you know that it'll be far under where Sioux Rivers is that following year. You've essentially taken those two years and you've done this with them. You've gone up one year, but I wanted to make sure, because there's been so much misinformation that's been floated out there, that we recognize that that will be a sizable levy reduction the year after for Woodbury County, where it would not be staying in Sioux Rivers. And if I can respond with one more, this year, Woodbury County spent $4.3 million in Sioux Rivers. The max levy only generates 3.1 million. That's an over $1 million gap that Sioux Rivers is already projecting out where service cuts will be, and we've started to compare that even on employment grants and other things, that it may actually be beneficial to go to Rolling Hills. So I want to make sure that that other piece of the puzzle that's so often left out, that there's an over $1 million gap looming in Sioux Rivers, is likewise acknowledged.
Okay, we could carry this discussion on further, and I'm not prepared...I mean, I don't really want to do that. I mean, I'm not acknowledging what you're saying. I understand the million dollar issue, but that has to do with a number of different things, including what may or may not happen with Friendship House. So, and you know that in terms of that...that $1 million, 700,000 may be designated to Friendship House, correct?
Right, that's no longer going to happen.
Wow, it's not going to happen?
No, the Sioux Rivers region made very clear that they would not help in that Woodbury County project, but they would in the Plymouth County project. That's been clear. They even voted and they amended their motion so that it was not an illegal one, and that they denied a Woodbury County project.
Well, again, that's subject to further discussion, because my understanding is the door's not entirely closed. But I don't really want to continue a long discussion about this. I just wanted to be clear about something, that the levy will increase the first year if Woodbury County is accepted into Rolling Hills, the levy will increase the first year. Based upon everything you've said, the projection will be it will then decrease, okay?
Yeah.
And we'll have to wait and see. So I just wanted to understand that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you done, Dennis?
This one, yes.
Any other questions on that? Item 3C for...
We got a vote on that, don't we?
Got a vote on it.
Oh, you do, sorry. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion carries 4 to 1, and 5 on voting against.
Okay, my next item is...relates to debt service. In that one, I'm requesting that we decrease the levy by 241,650 dollars. The reason why, when I first figured this out, I assumed, you know, that we were taking all the money from taxes through a levy. That was false. Boris and I woke up last night, middle of the night, and thought about this a little bit. I said, "No, tax increment. We have one set of bonds for Dogwood Trail and CF Improvements down there and AGP. Those there are being funded from tax increment, which I already have figured in another spot." So if we would levy to total max, had the increment here, we'd add 241,000, too much. So my recommendation is leave...reduce the debt service by 241,650 dollars.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Radick, second by Taylor. Any other questions or comments for Dennis?
Thanks for that revelation, have more of those.
You know, when you do budgets, you do think of this 24 hours a day, almost seven days a week. What you got to?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries 4 to 1.
Okay, now one bit of information here. Is this other budget items here?
Thank you.
Take a look at the bottom here. What I have done here on anticipation, it says probably would pass today, all three items. You look at the bottom there, and again, I'm going to reiterate, we made agreement with CF for a 20-year project here, rebating our share of their valuation. So when I did this, I have added back in on the bottom here, you can see, 662,000 for general basic and 203,498 into rural basic. It doesn't affect our levies because evaluation is additional valuation for this specific purpose. So you can see after today's actions, our subtotal countywide is 7.28767 compared to the current 7.40533. Countywide is nine point...or the rural is 9.53112, where the townships...this currently is 10.36757. So I'm showing you a total picture of tax asking that does include the rebate to CF. The reason I took all the money out of general basic, it's an in-and-out number, it does reduce...using the whole valuation, it does reduce our three countywide fund levies, but it increased general basic, but it's a wash. It says it's spreading in four funds, we're doing the rebate out of one. So that's why you just see general basic and rural basic affecting. And this number here will change once we get our final levies by a few dollars, but we always take the levy rate of that particular district times the CF valuation, which is 90,700,000 for that pipeline. That'll change every year. It'll change a little bit this year, once we get the final number, but it won't change too much. So that's just gives you an idea of where we're at, tax asking and tax rates countywide and rural. And before we hang on to our public hearing, I will have a detail of what affects all the properties, planned classes in the rural and in the cities. The good news is, I took mine, for example, a $100,000 house, actually dropped to 3.9% on the county levy taxes that that will be generated on that house, which is good news. We'll probably be the only one with the tax rate decrease. But we're just talking of Woodbury County, not city, not the school, Ragstent or any others. That's all we got control of. That's all I got?
See, that's done, David.
Can you comment or wait until citizens can start?
Do you have a head up?
You will want this one, I'm sure. Taylor Goodman, Taxpayers Research Council. We just wanted to point out, we commend you guys for not only dropping the levy rate, but dropping on expenses. I don't have the exact number yet, but I will get it. I was excited to hear that on Dennis's house, he will at least be paying the county a little less this year, that's good. Thank you. We just wanted to make sure that everyone gets, and I know people up here do, but levy rates may remain the same, but with val...with val...with...sorry, with valuations going up on households every two years by 10, 15%. The levy rate, if it holds steady, you still pay more taxes, so we are very, very happy to see that we are dropping the levy rate. And I've heard that the 15-year magic number is lowest in 15 years, so that's very good to hear. So I know we've had our disagreements with this budget over the last couple of months, but just wanted to make that point valid for you. Thanks, Dennis.
Thank you. We are really out of order, but looks like next is citizen concern. Do you have any citizen concerns at this moment? Approval of the agenda.
I'd move approval.
I will second to Taylor by...
Motion by Taylor.
To approve the agenda, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We have a consent agenda. Items 6 through 12 constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item 6, approval of the nets for the February 13, 2018 meeting. 7 is approval of claims. 8, Board Administration, public bidder, approval of notice of property sale resolution for parcel ending in 014, also known as 419 Isabella, setting for Tuesday, March 6, at 4:35. Number 9 is human resources, approval of memorandum of personnel transactions. Item 10, County Auditor received the appointment of Terry Johnson to the Watten Street Council. Item 11, Board Administration, approval of resolution for a tax suspension for initials SS. Item 12, approval of appointment of Mark Monson and Shelley Sorenson to the Community Action Agency of Siouxland Forward. I will move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Radick. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Pass the private jury. Thank you. Item 14, Board of Supervisors, approval of rescinding of opt-out provision request to Judge Hoffmeyer concerning firearms in the Woodbury County courthouse. Mr. Taylor?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So the intent of the Board of Supervisors has been to balance what was passed legislation, House File 517, and its legislative impact with safety and security. And we've taken steps to respond to that by lifting the weapons ban in accordance with what we believe is the intent of the legislation, and that's been completed in county buildings. But I think that practical implications of bringing weapons into the courthouse with varying functions has become unfeasible. I think it's impractical, adds cost, even though maybe not as much as has been purported, but is therefore, with adding that cost, I believe it is no longer tenable to continue considering. Knowing none of this has been neat, clean, or easy, I think we've tried to pass through a response to legislation, interpretations of the rule of law, issued court orders, and balance that with functional security. And so I'm hoping in the discussion, we can give one another grace as we navigate through this a little further. So I understand that the sheriff has responded with a cost, as well as the practicality of securing the buildings, and I understand that he interprets that it will add costs to two other buildings, but I think also the practicality of what we've heard as far as delineating different floors and areas and the security of having weapons in a courthouse. I think that, having taken public input, I would ask that we would rescind our January 16th request to Judge Hoffmeyer for an opt-out provision as it relates to this issue, and I would respectfully ask that we would move forward from the issue from here on out, and then have the Safety and Security Committee, as it has been doing and will continue to do, look at ways to make us safe and secure, not only in this building, but in other buildings as well. I don't think everyone in the public understands just how much time and effort goes into that Security Committee behind the scenes. And so with that, that would be what I hope we do first, and then also as a separate motion, approve and change the language to the employee handbook prohibiting employees from carrying firearms while court is in session, or as long as security is provided by courthouse security, and specifically that would be in the courthouse to make that clear. And so I've added language that I would propose to be in addition to the employee handbook. Those are my opening comments, Mr. Chair.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Last week, you declared a conflict of interest on this issue. I've heard that you plan to vote on this issue today, is that true?
I have been okayed by the county attorney's office that I can vote if I choose to.
Mr. Whitman, has your office's advice changed since last week in advising against it?
Well, the agenda item last week was, although on the same topic, it was a budget specifically related to courthouse security.
Right, but my question is for this item. That was the question last week, is for this item.
Well, if you just let me finish here, my...like I said, my understanding of last week, it was related to that specific issue that included budget implications for Mr. DeWitt's employer. Ultimately, the decision on whether or not a conflict exists is up to the elected official and whether they cast a vote or not. And we can advise whether we believe one may exist or not, but ultimately, the elected official makes that call. And in this instance, we believe that a resolution such as...or action such as what's on the agenda today is of general application to all employees of the county, as well as all the public, and so we don't believe that it presents that same situation as a budget specifically for courthouse security. So Mr. DeWitt is asked, and we don't believe that the item today would pose a conflict for him.
He's been advised to abstain last year by Assistant County Attorney Abigail Sills on this issue, and has in the past, so if that's your recommendation, that's all accepted, but that's not been the past practice.
Again, I don't think that you can lump all of these votes together. Each...each vote is unique as far as what's being, you know, what's at stake, and there is a fair amount of gray area when it comes to conflict of interest scenarios, so it's...it can be thorny to navigate. But like I said, I think the distinction here is there's not a budgetary issue that would potentially affect Mr. DeWitt differently than any of the rest of the supervisors as they're coming and going from this building.
I know you've abstained... And though you've abstained in the past on this particular item, on the opt-out letter, you still plan to vote today?
I intend to vote today.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on item 14A?
I'd move to rescind the previous January 16th request from the Board of Supervisors to Judge Hoffmeyer for an opt-out provision as it relates to allowing the carrying of weapons on certain floors of the Woodbury County Courthouse.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Potabom. Do we have any other questions or comments? Mr. Gill, would you take a roll call vote, please?
I do have comments. This, I'm sympathetic to the argument on practicality. I believe it may present a slippery slope in the future in regards to other buildings, specifically the Trosper Hoye Building, where before and after court orders, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, the second floor, did ban weapons. If there was any amount of security provided by the county at that location, the same argument could be used, that it's impractical without banning weapons in the whole building. That would necessitate further action by this board to rescind not only the opt-out letter, but the motion on the policy passed by the board last year. So it has been a messy process, as we, as a board, have attempted to follow the law and react to different and changing court orders. However, I don't, in this case, we had, the reality of the situation is, is simple. There are accusations, and there will be accusations, of what certain supervisors support in regards to guns being here or there. Did this board take any action to change the policy before the courts issued orders or before the law came into effect? The law came into effect, we reacted to it. At that time, I believe we took the appropriate course of action in not making this a Second Amendment issue as much as a judicial overreach issue. Members of this board made that case, said Supervisor Taylor, you said Justice Katie should run through legislature. And I respect, respected that you said that. I think that is the issue here. That is, that is the issue here, that the ends do not justify the means. Whether or not we want a certain policy or not, we took the stance, as a board, to follow the uniformity presented by the law as opposed to the uniformity presented by the first supervisory And so consistent with our policy, we provided security and screening. We still provide more security and screening than many other counties. I think we should count our blessings and realize this is a recent issue. Also, with the budget this year, I was surprised because I was prepared to support the addition of one, maybe two extra deputies in, in the, in the budget for roving purposes. We've discussed as early as January 2017, Mr. DeWitt, you brought up your support for adding a roving deputy. I believe I said I support that as well. We talked about the fact that security is not provided to these other two buildings. Many more contentious cases happened in the LEC. And so with these court orders coming down, I expected that sort of addition, that sort of request, and was ready to grant it. I was surprised that such a request was not made of the board to increase staff moderately, but instead to look to 20-plus part-timers to secure at almost a 100 percent certainty one building out of the three. In regards to our ability to do that, we, as a board, discussed, we can't have, and just as an example, the paramedic issue, we can't have 100 percent coverage, we can't even have 99. We'll have over 90. We didn't grant the full original request of that department head to provide perfect and seamless service, and I don't believe that we can here. I also don't think that, the notion that more people doing what is legal that they did for 95 years in the past here without major incident necessarily adds half a million to a million dollars in cost, just because someone says it does. We have to work with what we're given, and that's what all of our departments end up doing at the end of the day. So the practicality argument doesn't, I mean, I understand it, but it's going to create problems down the road. Again, I respectfully do not think the ends justify the means in getting a more comfortable solution in what is not our doing. We did not choose this, the board did not act to decide to create this lack of uniformity. This was provided to us by changes in the law and our, I believe, just reaction to court orders that have been backtracked, to use the words of another. And I think it was a mistake to bring this up again. I think people are getting tired of hearing about this issue, and we need to move on. Those are my opening comments.
And I would just concur that I think people are getting tired of hearing about the issue, and I'm hoping after tonight that we do. House File 517 is a muddled piece of legislation, let's just all admit that. It doesn't say shall or shall not. It says that counties like us or political subdivisions open themselves up to potential lawsuits. If someone can prove an adverse impact, well, how do you prove that? And what steps do you need to take? So I would just say, yes, I concur with you, and I agree that we responded to the law. It's been a muddled process, but I believe in the end that this is going to be the right and most feasible and practical thing to do. So, for whatever that's worth.
I agree with Supervisor Young's last statements. It's time to move on.
Dwayne Hoffmeyer, Chief Judge, Third Judicial District. I just wanted to point out a couple of items where I see this would potentially be ending up at. By the, and first and foremost, I'm in favor of your action. And I believe it strengthens security in the Woodbury County Courthouse. Do I wish, as the sheriff proposed, that this would be similar in the other buildings? Absolutely, and I hope someday we can get to that point. The key thing I want to point out is your vote today in correcting or rescinding the opt-out vote does not change your June 27th of 2017 action, when this supervised, group of supervisors modified the 2014 weapons ban to allow individuals with a valid permit. So I think you just, my point just being is, you need to recognize that by this vote, you are acknowledging, or at least know, that the result is that court security in the Woodbury County Courthouse will be controlled by court order. It will be dictated by the Supreme Court order, and you can anticipate, as you asked me last week, would I enter a similar administrative order to what I did, and I indicated that I would. And so this, I don't see as a change of the board resolution from, from June of 2017. To the extent you have always expressed this concern over House File 517, you have, to the extent of what it is, a court order that you're enforcing, not a county ordinance. Now, the only conflict or area that that poses any problem is in the Trosper Hoye. I've made a decision, along with consultation from my attorney, that I can only affect second floor there. Two accesses go to two different buildings, but I would plan on entering an administrative order prohibiting weapons in the law enforcement, or the law enforcement center in the Woodbury County Courthouse, and on second floor, the Trosper Hoye, which is what I did originally. So, just so, my take on what your action means and where I would take it from there. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Anyone?
Sir?
Once again, Mr. Chair, I would ask you to abstain. I believe it is best practice. I understand you will not, and I can count, and I realize that means the motion will pass, but you have abstained on this issue in June of last year, in July of last year, and on this exact same letter this year, January 16th. And I, once again, do not think that changing that is, again, I don't believe the ends justify the means.
Mr. Taylor?
And I know you're your own man, so you'll make your own mind up, but I would just urge all supervisors to follow the consultation of our legal counsel.
And that's what I've done in the past, and since I've been cleared for this one, I intend to vote. And to, again, agree with you on your final comment, this is time to move on. I've not heard anybody in favor of firearms in the courthouse, not one. I think it's time to put this where it belongs and be done with it. Mr. Potabom?
Call for the vote.
Mr. Raddick? Comments?
No.
Final comments? Mr. Auditor?
Potabom?
Aye.
Raddick?
No.
Taylor?
Aye.
Um?
Nay.
DeWitt?
Mr. Chair, I would ask and move to approve change in language to the employee handbook prohibiting employees from carrying firearms in the Woodbury County Courthouse while court is in session, or as long as security is provided by courthouse security. The attached language can be found in the backup material.
Did you, as you've done in the past, consult legal counsel on wording, or did you come up with?
Yes, I did.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Potabom. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
No. Motion passes three to two with Ung and Mr. Raddick voting against.
On the first one, could you say what the vote was? Water fountain turned on and made a very audible noise back there. It was hard to hear what that was.
We need to get that muffler fixed on the-
Just, I'll just comment quickly and I'll-
I'm sorry.
Sorry, it's three to two. Which way? Three to two, it passed, three to two, with Raddick and opposed.
Excuse me. Jim Rexton, 114 Midville. I just want to thank you all. I think it was a very wise decision. Mr. Young, you know, you talked about taxation without representation when you drove a nail into the conflict with the region, made no sense. The procedural discussion you raised today makes no sense. The fundamental issue, safety of people who walk into this building, including myself, my family, and anybody else. All you know, if you walk around the floors here where this court's in session, there are a lot of distressed people, and there are some angry people. So I applaud you, and I thank you all for the decision you made.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
My procedural recommendation was based upon County Attorney P.J. Jennings' recommendation last week. I understand it's changed, but that's a pretty good authority for me to bring the concern. Thank you.
Item 15, Secondary Roads, Mr. Nara.
Good afternoon. First item we have for today is approval of a completion certificate for the Port Neal Circle RISE project. This was to repave the northern and westerly leg of Port Neal Circle from Port Neal Road to the AGP plant. This is completed with roughly 50/50 RISE, and I believe it was TIF money that's coming from the urban renewal district. I recommend approval of the certificate of completion.
I will move approval of certificate of completion.
Second.
Motion by DeWitt, second by Potabom. Any questions for county engineer? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Pass this five to zero. Item B, consider approval of contract and bond for project number LB 7397 and LB 78 7397.
These two projects are Box Culvert Street Place, two existing structurally deficient bridges on 200th Street. The low bid for both projects, which were tied, I mean, two contracts are tied, was with Dixon Construction, one for $222,321, the other for $225,000. Can't find the right sheet of paper. 225, 432, I think it was. I recommend approval of both contracts and bonds.
I'll move that.
Motion by Raddick, second by Taylor. Let me correct that language. That was for projects LB L 77-73-97 and LB parentheses L 78-73-97. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Pass this five to zero. Approve final pay voucher for project number ERC 097 125, emergency relief repairs to county roads damaged in 2014 floods.
Oh, I get it. We have the final payment voucher, the, ready to be signed by the board for project ER parent 125. This project took care of slides along the roadside on D 50, D 54, and I think it was L 27. This was the third federally funded emergency relief project that was taken on, finally clears the last of our projects from the 2014 flood. I recommend approval of the certificate of completion.
I will move approval. Second. Motion by DeWitt, second by Taylor. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Pass this five to zero. Item D, receive and consider bids for crushing TCC concrete from county stockpiles.
Give the thrush a hand. Thank you.
We have our first bid from Schmelten Construction. They're from Marcus, Iowa. Check, a cashier's check has been included in lieu of a bid bond. Their bid for the project is $6 per ton, plus $15,000 for mobilization. Our second bid envelope is unmarked as to whom it's from, so- Our second bid envelope is unmarked as to whom it's from, so... We also have a check in lieu of bid bond. Bid is from CAP Recycling of Mapleton, Iowa. $5.05 per ton at both locations, $2,500 for the mobilization. Total bid, $121,175. I believe we have a clear enough result in the opening of bids to make a recommendation for award. Recommend award to CAP Recycling of Mapleton, Iowa.
I will move that.
Second.
Motion by Reddick, second by Potabom. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Pass this five to zero. Item 15E, receive and consider bids for project number LB-V-842-73-97.
This is for replacement of an existing bridge that has been closed for about the last nine months due to deterioration of substructure components. The county has already purchased the precast bridge sections that will be placed as part of this project. The bid today is for the labor to drive piling and complete construction of the bridge on site. First bid is from Nelson and Rock Contracting of Onowa, Iowa. Bid bond is included. Total bid price, $178,288.90. One seven eight, two eight eight, ninety. Next bid is from Graves Construction, Spencer Island. Bid bond is included. Total bid price, $193,472.72. One nine three, four zero zero, seventy-two. Our final bid is from Dixon Construction of Correctionville, Iowa. Bid bond is included. Total bid price, $175,677.40. One seven five, six seven seven, forty. With the result being within $3,000, I'd like the opportunity to evaluate the bids and make a recommendation for next week. I recommend you receive the bids and return them to the county engineer for review.
I move to receive and return to the county engineer for review.
Second.
Motion by Reddick, second by Potabom, to receive the bids and take them under advisement. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Pass this five to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Mr. Butler?
Apologize, I need to come back up for budget issue. The issue I have to have you pass or approve, it's ministerial, is setting a public hearing date for March 13th at 4:45. That'll be included with the compensation schedule being approved or whatever. Include the public hearing for exceeding the cap and approve the public hearing to approve our 1819 budget. So it's setting the date, March 13th to 4:45.
That's a single hearing?
It'll be three. The compensation will be a separate item to approve or disapprove or whatever. The separate public hearing will be for exceeding the cap, and the last one will be public hearing approval of the budget.
The compensation is at the budget here.
At the budget here, okay. So it'll be two hearings.
So you need to set...
They run back to back.
So you need to... Can we have a single motion to set two public hearings? I'd move to set a public hearing for the FY18 budget at 4:45 PM on March 13th.
FY18? Nineteen. Nineteen.
That's what I meant. And followed by a hearing to exceed the cap.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Potabom. Any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis. Motion carries five to zero. Item 16, Community Economic Development, Mr. Glazer, quarterly update on rural comprehensive planning project. It's an information item.
Good evening, Supervisors. David Glazer, Community Economic Development Director. Fairly routine agenda item before you. Just wanted to provide you with a quarterly update on the comprehensive planning project that's being conducted with eleven rural cities in Woodbury County. About a year and a half ago, almost two years ago, it'll be two years in July, the board entered into an agreement with Simmering Quarry to get eleven cities comprehensive plans at a cost of $112,530. We use local option sales tax to fund this project. I'm pleased to report that we've had an uptick in progress, and here, in the next few months, we're going to have roughly half of the communities at the adoption process where the city councils will formally adopt the final comprehensive plan. The consultants decided to add a couple of components of the planning process, which they did not put into their original proposal. So they added a couple of additional meetings with the communities and the councils at no cost to us. So I feel like the process or the end product will be a stronger one, and I'm appreciative of that. And other than that, I guess I would say that it looks like we're anticipating having all of our comprehensive plans complete by late next year, November, December. And I would just add that the consultants are based out of Clear Lake, Iowa, and it was not part of the agreement in their proposal for them to give quarterly updates in person. And so that's the reason for their not being here.
Any questions for Mr. Glazer on that part?
Anything that's surprised you or stood out along the way?
Um, I guess what I'm...
Or has it been pretty?
A little excited about is the focus and the amount of discussion that I'm hearing about being specific in discussions as it relates to growth and development. I think the communities are really using this opportunity and using the consultants. Keep in mind, not only do we have planning consultants through Simmering and Quarry, but it was a joint proposal with INS, a engineering firm. And so I'm looking forward to seeing the final plans with some preliminary cost, engineering costs, probable costs of engineering for some infrastructure plans and where they might see growth and development occurring, so... Which might help substantiate, you know, any funding requests that the cities may look at.
Thanks.
Are we good?
Yes.
Item B.
Another fairly routine agenda item before you is the quarterly update from SIMCO. As you know, the board has agreed to pay for 50% of the membership dues to cities in rural Woodbury County that wish to take advantage of SIMCO's services. On September of 17, we budgeted $7,293 in local option sales tax funds. That was to cover 50% of all 14 of our rural communities. Twelve cities actually accepted the offer this year at a total cost of $5,932. We did have some councils that decided to take advantage of that offer late in the year. SIMCO was kind enough to give them a reduced rate, sort of a prorated amount for that year. And so we're $1,300 under budget. We've got the majority of our communities receiving technical assistance from SIMCO, and SIMCO is located in Woodbury County, and so the executive director, Michelle Bostonellis, has been gracious enough to attend our updates and give you an oral report. So I'll take a look.
Hello. I'm Michelle Bostonellis, the executive director at SIMCO. Since I last talked with you, we had Correctionville, Danbury, Mowville, and Salix decide they wanted to jump on board, and we were happy to have them. In the second quarter, I reported we had about 62 and a half direct hours, which each calls $4,250 in service, and indirect hours, 134 hours, which a value of $9,112. So if you add those two together, you get just over $13,000 for services in the first quarter. I'm sure you guys have the report in front of you. I will highlight a few different things here. On the second page, under my second quarter notes, I did want to give you a quick update on the application we submitted with USEDA regarding the Highway 20 Economic Development Study. We are still in conversations with USEDA. They have not said no to our grant. It seems like we haven't got a definite yes yet, but they're asking a few more questions, and we have dialogue going back and forth. So I know several of the Woodbury County communities are along the corridor and are excited to see us work on that study. So as soon as we find out if we got the grant, then we'll let you know. But it's a perfect time with the comp plans coming up and our work with those communities. So that's still pending, but out there. Other things, just in the second quarter, I want to report on is that we did host our tri-state legislative forum at WIT in December. All of our members were invited to come. We had, we actually had representatives from each one of our states, but two from Iowa, and they were, you know, our members could ask questions and be part of that event. I think that's just one of those services we offer to our members to provide those opportunities, make sure that their voice is getting heard at the state level without having to, you know, travel all the way to the Capitol. Other things I'll report on here, work anticipated in the third quarter, which we're definitely in the third quarter right now. We are really busy right now working on grants. So there are a lot of grant requests right now, lots of TRIL grant requests. As you know, the IEDA had a new grant through the Community Catalyst Program. We had a couple of communities interested in that, a couple that moved forward, at least the pre-application was accepted. We have at least one working on a CDBG project, and then MURD grants are coming out right now, too. So quite a few communities have contacted us with helping with MURD grants. So lots of activities with that. And I should also add in there USDA, all my acronyms. USDA, also, there's a couple of those grants that we've had communities contact with that want some help on USDA grants. We're going to be hosting a membership workshop here coming up on March 2nd at WIT, and again, we invite all of our members to attend. That gives them an opportunity to find out a little bit more about SIMCO, to meet the staff. And we're going to be talking about code updates and urban renewal plans and urban revitalization plans. Going to be talking about GIS and just housing, so topics that we feel that the communities would like to hear more about and how we can assist them. So we're really encouraging for them to come out and get involved. I keep letting them know, SIMCO is, as much you put into it is what you get out of it. Kind of compare it to a gym membership, right? If you never go, you're not going to get anything out of it. You gotta go. So trying to get them involved with that. We're also planning our annual meeting, SIMCO annual meeting, that's coming up on May 10th. It's going to be hosted in Sergeant Bluff. The director of the Iowa DOT is going to be our guest speaker. So again, it's always open to our members, and they're invited to come, and that way they could meet with the Iowa DOT director, maybe an opportunity that they wouldn't get all the time. Kind of flipping through here on your report here, I did add in on the table that lists kind of all of our activities for the communities. I did put in there when each one of them joined, since they kind of are all joining at different times, and what they paid in membership dues, because we did prorate some of those. I let you know what staff person that they're working with, so just if you're out and about and they mention us or who they're working with that you know, and then the work that we did in each quarter, and if they let me know kind of what their plans are, that they're, what they want to work on this year. You can also see that, I think most of them are well on their way of paying or getting the amount of services to match their dues. There's a few a little bit behind that I anticipate they'll catch up, because I know we have work right now we're working on with them. And there's a few that have probably gone well and beyond our services we provide to them, and if you relate that with ours, they've gotten plenty of help with that. I did talk to David about some of the challenges and the opportunities coming up. I am excited to hear about the comprehensive plans, because I will say that's one of our challenges that we have with the communities right now, because when we go and talk to them, we say, "What do you want us to do? What can we do?" And they're not really sure yet, because they haven't gone through that process or completed that process to say, "Well, these are the priorities of our community." And that just has to be done. So as soon as those can get done, then that really helps us as we're working to try to assist them. And then communication is always a challenge. I do a lot of back and forth phone calls, emails, trying to get interaction. A lot of the communities have limited office hours, so sometimes it's hard to reach them. And many of the councils, you know, only meet once a month, so sometimes decisions aren't made at the fastest pace. And then also, when we're working on grants especially, I always ask the community to have a champion on the other side who is the one supplying us the information, because we can't just write a grant with nothing. We need to know cost estimates and, you know, what they want to do and how is this going to work. And so we really have to rely on someone on the other side to feed us that information. Sometimes I get calls that just say, "Oh, we want to work on a grant," and then it's crickets. So we really have to have that feedback with them. And we've been, you know, working with the communities in some of this membership workshop. I think we'll get into that, you know, what they need to do to be successful at writing grants and what they need to do to prepare for that so that we can take it and run with it. Opportunities that are coming up, like I said, the Highway 20 study, our membership workshop and our annual meeting, I think are great opportunities that the members can be part of and participate in. So I think that's it for the second quarter. If you guys have any questions or any suggestions for us, I'd be happy to take those.
Any questions?
All right. We'll keep plugging away. Thanks.
Thanks, Michelle.
Item 17, Building Services, approval of valve and actuator replacements as necessary in the amount not to exceed $28,406. Kenny?
Kenny Schmitz, Building Services Director. Item for you is to replace 28 valves and actuators in the courthouse in floors three through eight. Originally, the intent was to have these replaced as part of HVAC Project Two for the courthouse, which we will not be moving forward with for quite some time due to the cost. We still have a bunch of valves and actuators that do need to be replaced now, and so that is what the request is for. We received a bid from Star Controls on the controls and Rasmussen Mechanical Services on the valve replacements, and the cost of those both together total $28,406. We don't have a solid number from Rasmussen Mechanical. They bid theirs on a time and material cost not to exceed. Therefore, it could be a little less than that, hopefully. It was their best guess on the amount of time and the amount of valves that they would need to be replacing.
I would move approval of valve and actuator replacements in the amount not to exceed $28,406.
Second.
Motion by DeWitt, second by Reddick. Any other questions for Kenny? All those in favor say aye. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, say nay. carries five to zero.
The second part of that has a motion, utilize funds from CIP B-13-17.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Young. Any other questions for Kenny on this item? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Passes five to zero. Thanks, Kenny.
Thank you.
Item eighteen, Board Supervisor Scoring System for CIP Projects.
I've got one item left.
I'm sorry.
Seventeen B, I'm sorry, Rocky.
We just did that.
Yeah, we just did that. We just did that.
The second motion you passed was for B-13-17. It would have been the second motion on item seventeen A.
Oh, you fooled us.
I did. I actually didn't get to be, I'm sorry, it depends on how you look at this and how the ten items are written up.
Do we need to revote or remotion that?
You're good.
Okay.
We're good? Okay.
Seventeen B, thank you.
Thank you.
I have to, no, we have to, we have to pick.
Seventeen B is for the Sulan District Health Building. And this is for HVAC repairs to the Administration Office and Classroom A. We have a scenario over there right now where we are having difficulty or the inability to heat those two areas above 65 degrees. It's basically due to our fresh air intake that we're bringing into the building to keep the air healthy in that facility. Part of the problem is the current controls don't allow us to actually see how much fresh air is coming into each space and identify how much fresh air the space really needs. Of the Administration Office, the heating system's controlled by the, or is supplied by the boilers, but the air system is supplied by Rooftop Unit Seven. And so as we bring that fresh air in, and you might have one thermostat or two in a different area that say, "Hey, I'm going to turn the heat off." When it does that, the Rooftop Unit Number Seven supplying the air keeps supplying the airflow. So what you get is a drafting effect, or it seems like you can't, it seems if you're an occupant that you're, you've got a draft blowing cold air on you, which in effect it really is. Really, the only way to fix that is to get a thermostat in there that has CO2 capabilities. What that will do is let that space know what the fresh air and the temperature are actually doing, and that then can cycle that amount of air intake down to a lower level. Currently, we're at a fixed level, and we can't decrease it. And as far as the, now that was the Administration Office. Classroom A is a little bit of a different scenario. It has four thermostats in it, all trying to control the single space at the same time, none of them knowing what the other one is doing. This is done over time due to different projects and redesigns of the space. Really, the only way to fix this is to remove all the thermostats, install one thermostat to control all new actuators on four different VAV units and get control of the area. Another part of this, or a third part of it, is Resource Consulting Engineers has given us, given us a price to do a study on the facility. There's been so many space redesigns and modifications to that building through the last several or many years, and no real study has been done on the HVAC system. And so as these projects have taken place, nothing has been taken into account on how it affects the HVA system and HVAC system and how it doesn't know that all these changes have taken place in the redesign. And so really now, what we have is a bunch of different offices and areas that were originally designed in the original building with an HVAC system with a whole different intent. One of the problems that has taken place over the last several years is as units go bad and are replaced, and I'm talking about rooftop units, which are a major portion of what's controlling all of this, they've just been replaced item for item. In other words, as number six goes bad, it's reached its time of life, let's replace it. As number five goes bad, let's replace it. That doesn't take into account that that unit no longer is really doing justice to the building, because it doesn't know the design changes that have taken place and the modifications that have happened.
So basically with the remodels and such, that the ductwork doesn't match the rooms that it's shooting into?
That's a good way to put it, yes. And so I'm proposing, as Resource Consulting Engineers recommended, that we do a study on that facility before we move forward in the future and replace any other units as they reach their life expectancy, and we have at least one that's getting close, and not make the same mistakes that we've made in the past. And so we can design a plan going forward that's the best for that building. It may not be replacing that unit as a replacement for another unit. It might be, hey, you really should think about taking these two units out and replacing it with this one and redesigning some things for this area. And so that's what this study would tell us.
So this is the 22,562 here on this particular piece?
That's 11,000 on that part.
It would be, the Resource Consulting would be the 11,000 portion, yes.
So I have a question then, on the controls. Would you maybe lose some redundancy if you waited and did that until after the study? Or are the controls that completely separate from the units that?
It wouldn't be redundant. We could utilize, we could reutilize.
You're going to use the same controls, but I'm just saying, are you going to like, you know, take everything apart, put it back together again, only to take it apart and then put it back together again with the control board itself?
No.
Okay.
Would it be a fair characterization to say you've identified one of the problems, but there are many other problems that could potentially be identified, so you're tackling that one with the ventilation, you know, where you're using CO2 sensors?
Yes, most absolutely. Yeah.
Well, I will move seventeen B one, the star controls.
Second.
Motion by Reddick, second by Taylor. That's for the 11,562.
Correct.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
I'll move seventeen B two, the study.
I'll second as well.
Motion by Reddick, second by Taylor for the 11,000. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Should probably clarify and call it engineering plan.
Yes, and I'm sorry, Corey with Resource Consulting Engineers wanted to be here tonight. He had some conflicting things, but he was prepared to come up and discuss what that study would do for us in depth. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reddick, Scoring System for CIP Projects.
I threw this on here as an information item. I'd kind of like for us to come back within the next few weeks with a scoring system maybe we could all agree on. If you could look at a couple of the things that are in here. The one is a previous scoring system that was used by the county. The first one is actually one I had come up with that kind of models a little easier, I think a little easier scoring system. At the end of the day, we've got to be able to have elected officials like ourselves and department heads able to understand it, so we do want it to be simple. With this here, when we have issues come up where, you know, maybe somebody says, "Well, we really need to look at, you know, cutting something out of the CIP." If we don't have a scoring system to know what's maybe mandated, what's most important to do, I think it's just easier to make those decisions and have people actually kind of fight for the projects and the CIP that they would want. So I just, I don't know if the TRC has anything to say about it, or maybe they would like to give some suggestions as well. I would be willing to take their ideas.
Looking at it right now, is this pretty similar to what the city does?
Ours, the sheet I put together is like a toned-down version of that possibly.
Okay.
The second sheet is, like I said, it's what the county used to do.
Okay.
So, yeah.
We will look at it and get back to you. Thanks for the suggestion.
I have a question for Kenny. In the past, we did use this. It was you and Dennis that scored.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
And Shane, thank you. So I don't think the board really saw much of this during our budget cycle, because we either had money for everything or nothing, which was one of those.
Right, we didn't. That's correct, and that's why we didn't use it in the last process, because it didn't, at that time, it just didn't make sense. We didn't have the funds.
Unfortunately, we wasted all of your time, because, you know, that's my concern. This is a good idea, but if we're going to do this, we need to, we need to use the results, because, you know, you all sat in a room and hashed it out.
Correct.
Came up with ratings, and we just said yes to everything or no to everything. So if we're going to revise this, that's fine, but it hasn't really been used yet. So I want to make sure it's used before we talk about.
Yeah, I mean, I'm certainly open to revising if you'd like. If, I'll bring you, I'll show you these. These are the current CIPs that have been rated by myself and Dennis and a third party using that same template. And there is a column there if the board would like to also weigh in and average in on these scores. Also, we can add as many columns as anyone might like. I mean, we can put a column in there for the building director or the person that's actually asking for a CIP item. Dennis, if you'd like to talk about the template and the scoring, this is kind of a template we were recommended to use. I'll let you talk about this.
This template actually came from GFOA, Government Finance Officer Association, and we put this together, I think, three years ago. In the front page, you'll see there's the first improvement, building improvement, it says what it is, building the Sulan District Health HVAC controls. Then you flip over to the next two pages, it actually defines what each one of these factors are, the criteria, description, and then the third one, or the second page after that, it'll be the third page, gives you the factors, weight factors, things like that. So this is the one that was kind of recommended by GFOA. We followed it, we did it one year, we spent quite a bit of time on it. But like Matthew says, the board adopted everything without basically looking at this. Now, we have gone through all the projects for next year being proposed, so you can take a look at it if you'd like. A supervisor can rate this, too. We never matched on a rating. We have different ratings all the time on priorities, things like that, through the three of us, but you can see how it goes across in the ranking, you know, on average, you know, ranking across, and it gives you a total on the bottom right-hand corner in yellow for each project.
Mr. Chair. Sure. So one of the things that I think the board's really done well the last two or three years is try to do more long-term planning, look at facilities that need to be closed down, look at the space reallocation. We did the initial long-term facility master plan with the Baker Group to get kind of an aerial overview. Here's my challenge, and I don't know how to do this, and so I look for your input, and I appreciate Keith bringing this forward. And Matthew also alludes to this, if we have one year's worth of funding and we say, "Rate all of these," but it's for that one year's worth of funding, then it's exactly as Matthew said, it's all for naught, right? My challenge would be, how do you take five, 10, 12 years and do that to be able to step back and say, "Well, you know what? This next year, we know that," for example, the courthouse, we know that there's $10 million worth of projects here, we know that there's potential expansion there, we know all of these. How do you do that in a way that says, "This is your one-year, two-year plan versus five years, 10 years"? That's where I'd like to see us use something like that, so that we can say, "Hey, we've got a roadmap. We know five years down the road, we're going to have to start addressing these windows or this tower cracking or whatever it is." I think that kind of alludes to both of your points. Otherwise, we say, "Here's one year's worth of funding, I'll rank them, and here's the funding for that one year." Well, what's the point of all that? So if we can start building kind of a high-level aerial overview roadmap, however we want to use the metrics, I think that's really where we make the money.
Well, and not every year is a cut everything, keep everything kind of budget, you know. Sometimes you might want to just cut, you know, 150 or 200,000 out of the CIP to keep the debt levy down to a certain level. And you could look at, you know, the different scores and say, "Well, this one, you know, let's say fiber out at the conservation fiber wasn't that high a score." Or maybe we look at moving that, or the security cameras, or... I mean, it's not just building maintenance CIP projects. It's every CIP project. And in some ways, I mean, I like this because it really kind of weighs things better, but at the same time, it's also a little more complex to look at, and it does take you guys a little longer, I'm sure, than maybe a more simplified form. So I guess if there's changes you guys would like to see made, I mean, I don't want you to spend a half an hour or an hour on each, you know.
I think you need a short term, you need a long term. Short term are immediate things that need to be done. Long term is exactly what you're saying. Projects are half million, million-dollar projects. How soon are we going to do them? Are we going to do them year one, two, three, four, five? And prioritize those, come back to the board.
I kind of like what Keith's saying, too. If this is the one-year plan, and here's at the bottom of the list, here's the low-hanging fruit, you could cut off here, but then, yeah, that two-to-five-year, what are we looking at down the road that we need to start preparing for?
To make it easier, we can make a recap sheet here showing each project and what the average rating is. We did that one year, we had about forty, fifty projects. But we can give you a recap of all this and show you a rating score total, and then you know your low-hanging fruit.
If I could, Shane Ulbricht, Baker Group. One of the challenges for a long-term, it's a great idea, and I commend you for that, but one of the challenges, unless you pick a dollar amount that you're capable of being able to sustain for a project each year, it's hard to build you a five- or 10-year plan. If you tell me you've got half million dollars every year, well, then Kenny can try to build a budget with that. But if you don't give us a target of where we're headed, you've got, quite frankly, from walking around these buildings for the last three years, you've got more needs than you've got dollars right now. I'll tell you that point-blank. I mean, with the courthouse that needs a system and everything else, it's hard to give you a five-year plan and be, come up in front of you and say, "Here's our five-year plan," because you guys are playing damage control right now. I mean, you're just trying to get caught up and struggling to just get by, and you get frustrated every time we come up with these little, little things that we find, because we still don't know all we don't know yet. I mean, as we've been looking at these things, so without giving us a dollar amount, you say, "Hey, I want you to come up with the best $2 million of the projects you've got," or, I'm throwing the numbers out, it doesn't matter, whatever that number is. But without that, it doesn't allow Kenny much of a chance to be able to hit you with a five- and 10-year plan. Anyway, that's, that was my two cents.
That's a good analogy, Shane. I think what you don't see on here, we all know that the courthouse needs a CIP or something to fund it for its repairs into the near future. You know, I'll just say it, we're looking at $12 million that we don't know we're going to get. You don't see it on here, because there's no sense in Kenny putting it on here. Not until the funding gets figured out. So are there other projects like that? Well, maybe not to that extent of a dollar amount, but there's certainly probably others out there that are 1.2 or above. out there that are 1.2 or above. We've even looked at some, you know, similar to the LEC detention area and so forth. So, again, as Shane said, it makes it very difficult to, to target projects without a dollar amount or without a set known amount that you're going to have fluctuating over a five-year period that Dennis has to play with.
I'd like to suggest, you know, I don't think we're going to figure this out tonight, but maybe liaison's budget analyst, you guys taking and with the goal of simplifying the form, looking at a one-year and looking at what is an appropriate funding level and coming back with a recommendation to say, here's, you know, sort of a roadmap forward. I'd be willing to work on that and...
I'd be willing to work on it. To me, I don't know, I don't know to Dennis and to an outsider, to me, the form is, is simple and easy, but I've been through it many, many times on different projects. So, I can't say as an outsider whether this is difficult for you, but I've, you know, I've got the Excel document on my computer, and I can whip through one of these CIPs and score this in a matter of minutes. And so, I don't know, you know, not being an outsider, I don't know if that sounds, if this looks difficult to you, but once you've learned the, what's attached to each rating, it's fairly, it goes fairly quick.
The only thing I can think of that we could give you is a, here's what you can expect in funding for these sort of projects is if we, you know, we already agreed as a board to set aside a certain amount of CF revenue for property tax relief, and this could be one form of that. But that obviously starts out pretty small and gets large every, every year, gets larger by 5%, but that's not a perfect system, but if the source of funds is kind of isolated, like from that project, it's a lot easier than saying, after we budget for, you know, after we back into the budget for the secondary roads, after we do this and we do that, and we find out what mental health is going to do the next year, then we'll tell you, and the number we give you is usually totally different than what you planned for.
Exactly. Because things, is what you're getting to, is things change unexpectedly and rapidly, you know, just by nature of the system.
Is there something we could, I mean, obviously, debt service is something that we use and will continue to use. Is there a certain amount of, I mean, we have an extremely low, and I'm not asking to start becoming the federal government, but is there a certain amount of appetite that we have in looking at that? I actually, I actually think the CF revenue is something to look at. I mean, we live within our means as that comes on. I know we've talked about some portion for economic development, but David's nodding that we can go ahead and donate that to building projects, so I appreciate that, and, but the...
Cameras are fixed, they can't get your expression, so we'll just tell them what it is.
But I, I think some of those, you know, discussions need to, we need to look at. I, I agree that it's not a perfect, you can't count on everything, but we should be able to count on some things, so.
Right. I just can't think of anything that's more static and isolated.
We, we know what our cost for, out of TIF revenue, off the CF, all that whole Woodbury Grove area, we know what it is for the next five years. If we don't do any more projects, we know pretty much what's going to be released. But after five years, as it stands right now, we don't have any projects after five years, unless something comes up. But it's growing, so it's going to grow at a pretty rapid rate here pretty soon.
One more thing for when you're concerned that, sorry Shane, again. Right now, you put no money in a budget for anything for roof repairs and things like that. I think that is a practice you need to look at, because the first time one of these roofs come due, you know, that's, that's a half million dollars right there just to fix a roof. So, having some money pre-set aside to, to do roofs and different maintenance like that is a good thing, so you don't have to try to just fund that all in one year, because that would take up a lot of what you're budgeting right now for CIP, just to fix a roof that's leaking or whatever.
I also want to mention, we need to be careful with our debt service levy. Dennis, I talked to you about that today. You know, we reduced the tax rate, largest amount in 15 years, and we also reduced debt service today, a couple hundred thousand. And in the future, we're definitely looking at raising that part of the budget as we undertake huge capital projects that require debt. And so, that, you know, we want to avoid the yo-yo effect, we've talked about that many times, and I fear that we've gone down too far in debt service.
We're, we're actually paying off two debts that are actually programmed for a year in advance from what we're paying them now, and two years. So, we're in our debt down where we only have about five projects left. And one's funded by conservation funds, so we have four by tax dollars. So, that's true. We get down too far, we're going to have a spike on our, you know, if we have a major CIP project requires bonding or large capital to 1.2 million, it's going to spike it back up.
And where possible, we can pay off debts early in all cases or just in some cases or?
Yeah, there's one we could pay off, it'd require about $750,000, but we can, you know, talk about that a little bit, I think, in our public hearing, which way this region goes, things like that. Before we go, but, yeah, we've got to be careful.
Any other questions for?
I just like Shane's comment, his first time he's up here, when he says, we still don't know what we don't already know.
Yeah.
True words have never been spoken.
Not to mention the daily fires that Kenny gets to put out on new discoveries and so forth, so. Any other questions or comments for these guys? Reports on committee meetings.
I attended the Woodbury County Farm Bureau annual meeting, I believe, with Supervisor Witt and Braddick. Went well.
They said they really liked us, us three, and they don't like you two guys for natural.
Thanks, Keith. I forgot all about that.
I want to mention that it was my anniversary, and so, as much as I like you...
That was much of an...
Yeah, as much as I like you guys, I don't love you, so I, I'm still married and...
I can still see the tire tracks on your back.
Yeah, thanks. Sure none of you threw me under.
No, that was, it was enjoyable, informative, you know, we get input from those folks out there in the areas. It's about as much fun as the town hall sometimes, so it was a neat deal to be out there.
Do have one question, speaking of meetings in which there could be a quorum. I understand that there's potentially a Thursday night meeting at the museum in which Dick Owens is inviting to eliminate people on the region, and I'm planning to go, and understand that Supervisor DeWitt may go, but I don't want to be in a situation where there's more than two of us. So, if that's the case, I'd just ask that, that would be made known, because I think we want to be there in order to be sure to share all the information as relates to region funding and different things that are being put forward. So, just maybe work, unless you know right now that that is a potential.
I don't plan to.
Good. Thank you.
I don't either. I'll be, still be in Des Moines Thursday.
Okay.
I don't plan to either.
Very good.
Could I, real quick, since you mentioned a meeting, that reminds me, Friday morning, there's a CASA fundraiser at Hilton Garden Inn. I was invited to, I assume the board members were. I'm planning to go, and I think a quorum went last year, so...
Yeah, I am as well.
I cannot go, so, anybody else on that?
I can't go.
Mark, you're gone? I don't believe so. Any other reports on committee meetings? Any citizen concerns? Don't have too many citizens left. Any board concerns?
I have one, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
I would like to, and I spoke to Chairman DeWitt about this, and I haven't spoken to Gary, but I'd like to next week have a, a time where we honor first responders, emergency personnel, emergency services management, and the sheriff's office, all those who respond. Last week, on my way home from drill, I saw the Cushing Fire Department, Emergency Services, Cushing Ambulance, Ida County Sheriff and Woodbury County Sheriff responding to a 22-year-old who had been hit by a semi. And I was so moved at what those people do, and fortunately, the young lady lost her life. But I'll never forget them and what they, they were doing, people who are volunteers and, and standing in the gap between life and death for this young lady. And I think it'd be great next week, and we plan food proclamation, whatever, and if Gary could invite anybody and everybody I think it'd be, if that works or doesn't work.
What'd be nice to do is do that at one of your town hall meetings.
Okay.
What's your next town hall meeting?
We haven't set one up yet. We should probably start working on that, but that probably wouldn't be for, what's taking, get one of them going? Four to six weeks?
They appreciate, you know, notice.
Good knowing.
Some of them meet monthly.
You tell...
Might get a better turnout in the, in the evening with the town hall meetings rather than trying to do it, because they're just all made up for it.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd agree.
Yeah, they would appreciate it.
Yeah. Well, let's, I'll lean forward, and if it's all right with everybody, we'll work with Gary on something in the next month or two, and really like to do something like that.
Certainly.
And please continue to thank everybody that you work with and you work with the sheriff's office.
Any other board concerns, Mr. Patabom?
Mr. Wick? Have, have you guys been hearing about the PSA, the Public Safety Assessment for the jails that the courts are supposed to be looking at, using? Because they, I had been, I mean, there was something, it's, it's a way of helping people be able to get out of jail that can't afford bond. And I, truthfully, I got called the other day, and that guy was telling me about it. A couple of years ago, I was down at the legislature, and they were talking about it, and they, I thought it was kind of a dead deal, and then I just was told that it started in January at Polk County. And there've been all kinds of concerns about, there's like three questions on the form, and one of them, it isn't even what are your ties to the community to let the person out. And I was told that Woodbury County was going to be looking at it real soon.
I'm not familiar with it, but we'll wait and get back to you.
Yeah, I've got a call into Des Moines and Polk County a couple of days ago, and they were going to look at it and try to get back to me, because they were supposed to be, the way I understood it originally is they were going to have six months to a year to try it, and then, you know, be the Guinea pig, let everybody know. And they started it this January, now they're talking about moving it to other counties. I mean, on the surface, it's a great idea, but I'd want to see how it works or doesn't. I appreciate it if you would. That's all I have.
One.
Sir?
I just have a question for the board regarding the action we took on rescinding the opt-out provision request. The judge is, the district judge is correct that it does not affect our action, I believe in June last year, where we actually moved the policy of rescinding the weapons ban. So, like it or not, that's the current board's policy. And so, my question is, are we waiting for Hoffmeyer's order before someone on this board is likely to put that on the agenda, to rescind that as well? Even being on the losing side, I'm all about procedure, and I want things to be clean. So, I'm just wondering, why was that not submitted as a part of today's actions?
Because they are two different issues.
Right.
So, the weapons ban in, let's just take Suland District Health, that weapons ban has still been lifted, and that does not affect buildings that are not related to the Woodbury County Courthouse and others. So, because they're two different issues, reinstating the, I think, 2014, helped me out, I was not even here, weapons ban is not an action that the board took today, nor do I anticipate reinstatement of that ban.
But it's, I mean, it's a certainty that the judge's order will conflict with the board's policy.
Right, I completely disagree, and I think he'd completely disagree with you. His order is only pertaining to certain buildings and certain floors. His order will not address secondary roads shed out in Mowville, Suland District Health, the Eagles Building. It didn't before, it won't since.
But the county's policy was countywide, was it?
Correct, right, but his order, again, is only pertaining to certain buildings, and so I think what you're asking, if I am understanding you correctly, is, is the board planning on reinstituting the weapons ban in all county buildings? And my response to that would be no. The board's policy is still the policy, except where the court orders speak, and where they don't speak, they're silent on, and we are allowed to do. And I actually think it gives us the proper standing with House File 517. The only issue that I put forward today and that I think this board took is, except where it's pertaining to courts of law, in which we are recognizing, I guess as a majority, that there is some separate considerations. I mean, it doesn't conflict at all. I mean, he's, he said that, I think it's clear. The Mowville secondary road shed, his order has nothing to do with.
I know, I just, I still don't understand how this board takes a policy that affects the courthouse and the judge writes an order that affects the courthouse in another way.
Because I think we make policy all the time on specifics, and because we're relating one, where we're saying, we want to rescind our request to you when it was to allow certain public areas, we're going to pretend that either didn't happen or rewind to a point in time in which it hadn't, and he's willing to amend that order. I mean, those court orders were building specific in the first place, so I think it just goes back to that. It's the same thing with our employment, our employee handbook and policy. I mean, it's pretty easy. He didn't have anything to do with the Suland District Health building before, and he does it now, as it relates to his court orders, so...
I know that.
Okay.
But, but both apply to the courthouse, that's all I'm saying. And so, now we're taking the position that, as you said, the court order supersedes the policy. In the past, we did not. We had the board supervisor's policy, and we had separate action by other parts of the county. And we sent, you know, we had that, that was messy, but we had that, and the board still, still stood by its policy. So, am I understanding, we're not standing by our policy in regard, when there's a court order, when in the past, we did, we stood by our policy.
The board voted three to two today to amend and change its policy, so there is currently no conflict. I mean, I understand you may have a disagreement, but we took action today to amend the employee handbook, as well as to rescind an opt-out provision, so...
What, Pat?
This is a board concern, but you think you're starting to get into debating policy.
That's all I have. Anybody else? We are adjourned. Taylor?
Do you have a second?